Okay. So. Would we like to? Get started now? I think, I think we could. Get started. Also, I'll call the meeting to order. And our first item on the agenda for tonight's meeting is adjustments to the agenda. Does anybody have any adjustments to the agenda? Nope. Okay, if not, we can move on to public comment. So our room full of public who's here can all say what they want. Oh, there's nobody here except us, so we're good. Um, then we can move on to the minutes from the April. Eleventh meeting. So it entertain a motion to accept the minutes. Anybody want to make a motion?
A motion, a motion.
Yeah, so I'm gonna say Caitlin moved and Raylene seconded. I might have it backwards, but um, are there any adjustments or questions about the the minutes? Okay, if not, uh, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye or raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Nope, so the minutes. From April 11th have been adopted. So now we can get on to the. Next part of the meeting, which is discussing the interim. Zoning changes um. And. Janet included. Uh, the proposed changes in language and also of. A letter from Garrett Baxter at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns about. When it's appropriate to do interim zoning and and kind of what goes with that. So I don't know if we want to talk about. That first, or do you want to talk about the actual language? Well, why don't we talk about the letter from from VLCT first? So interim zoning. Is not just for every kind of run in the mill thing. It has to be for an emergency. Or something for the. You know, more immediate betterment of the community. And I'm going to throw in my two cents that I actually think this is an appropriate time for that. Uh, because we had floods. Uh, flood last summer and we have a need for more housing. And these changes. Would perhaps more than anything else that's going on. Give an opportunity for housing to come up, come online, particularly apartments, multifamily units. Uh, sooner rather than later. Uh, so this would be the. Accelerated way. To allow those changes to go into place because. If we were approving of these at this meeting, they could go to city council up. One hearing could be scheduled and they could adopt. The changes. Uh, the downside of that is the interim zoning is for a limited time. And so you have two years to kind of. Spend some time to. Either go through the full hearing process and adopt the changes or. Or perhaps do some more work on it and. And make further changes and adjustments, so. That would be something to do, but if we didn't. Do the interim zoning, you know, we had to have a hearing. We would be having a hearing in our June meeting. And then the city council. One would hope might be having their hearings in. In July and August, so by the time. Everything was adopted, it's going to probably be the end of August. So that's just my thoughts. I see Joe has his hand up.
Yeah, so I I would definitely agree with the part about this being sort of an emergency situation. I think I think that's right on. That's why we were looking at it in the first place. Um, I guess my only question is like I was looking at that letter and it talks about having to um. I'll just quote, it says predicated on the town conducting or taking action to conduct studies. Or holding a hearing, so I'm not sure if that was done or. Or if it could still be done. Sort of at council before we move on with this, or if it needs to be, I'm not quite sure of the. Procedure there, but that seems like a possible concern to at least address or look at.
What that means is um. It's the one and done city council meeting.
Yep, okay, so that would be covered by what they'll. Okay, that's and that's if that's the case, that's fine. I just wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Like David said, that's the benefit of term. As long as uh, um. That's the route that everybody wanted to take, which I was really hoping that's the route everyone wanted to take. Uh, we still have to hold our hearing, then pass it on.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, just the way it was worded in the letter wasn't clear if it was sort of a a meeting additionally to that, or if that would cover it. It sounds like that would cover it, so that would, yeah, that would clear that concern. Thank you.
I would just also agree. I mean, I think this is the entire reason that we started down this path is we felt that there was some urgency. In addressing the housing crisis and so. Um, to me, that that meets the. Um, intent of, you know, how it's described here. By the VLCT lawyers, so. If it means that we, it, you know, it's only in place for a couple of years and we have to do more work going forward, I think that's fine. We still have this urgency to to kind of get something done now, so.
Yeah. And I think the process is we could, I don't think we have to have a hearing. We can. Just simply send our recommendations to the city council. And then they would have to have a public notice and a hearing, and after that hearing, they could. Could adopt it, so. Um, I don't even. I don't even know what the notice requirements are for that. I don't know that it's. The full thirty days, but I would hope that once we send it to them that they would. Get that process. On the earliest agenda they could. Anyone else have any, any thoughts about process? And I'll just ask Janet real quick, do you agree that we don't need? The planning commission doesn't need to have a notice and hearing. It really is a city council action. So our involvement is simply to make a recommendation to the city council. And give them something to consider.
Um. Yeah, this is the, that's the part that I really struggled with, and that's why I reached out to Garrett. Cause you read it and it leads you to believe that it only needs to go to city council or the select, or you know, the ultimate legislative body. Um, that it also referred to having to have a hearing under a different statutory requirement. Um. Then it kind of felt the circular diamond agreement that I'm pretty sure. We don't need a hearing. We can get it. We can ask the city council to. Excuse me, entertain this. And as an emergency measure.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's totally needed.
Yeah, and then at their level, they have to have public notice. Of the proposed change and have a hearing. So they would have to have one hearing instead of two. But you have to be, you know, notice would have to be given. But I think once it comes from us, it's in their court just to. Give their notice and whatever the timeframe is for that and have their. Have a meeting to discuss it. You know, I would certainly hope, you know, I would. Right to be there and any other planning commissioners might want to be at that. Meeting if there are questions or just to explain. Why we think there is there's some urgency to it. Rosemary, you had your hand up and I didn't, didn't. Say, ask for.
That's okay, I was um. First of all, I'm glad that Janet went for some legal advice that that always helps. But I concur, I agree with all of you guys. I I think this is great. That we move forward. It is an emergency, there's no doubt. And um, so I I agree with everything that's been said thus far. Thank you.
It sounds like, like, oh, Janet.
Uh, yes, thank you, David. I just, I just want everybody to understand that, that. You know, fast forward and this all goes through and we've really opened up the door to allow. You know, more housing in structures that already have the room on lots that uh can be built. Um, it's literally the first step. Because there's a lot of other parts that would need to be met in zoning. Um, so I just want everyone to remember that. It's not always going to work for some people, but it certainly is going to make it a heck of a lot easier.
Yeah, the other urgency I would mention is I. When does the state? Uh, law that adopt that changes some of the requirements go into place? Is that this? July, Ju- July 1st, or is it the end of this year?
I'm obviously not sure.
Cause that would be another, you know, urgency to it is to get our. Our ordinance. In line with at least the, in a minimal way, the, what the state states requiring and and trying to do. So. If everybody is comfortable with the idea of doing this as interim zoning, then. Perhaps we should move on and look at the actual language that Janet sent to us. And see if it, if that works and if there's any uh tweaks that need to be made or whether we're ready to. Uh, send it forward. So, so I don't know, Janet, do you want to take a crack at just quickly going through there's? There's not really that many changes, but but maybe you want to run through it and. Yes, we can see if anybody has questions about any parts of it.
Yeah, if you give me a minute, um, it's. I did not grab the folder when I blew out of the office Monday. Tick, um, so I've got to open it up on the website, so give me a second if you don't mind, please.
I think the first change is on what is page nineteen of the. Not of our, I guess it's page seven of our packet, but it's page nineteen of the zoning. Ordinance.
Okay, so you said.
It's the next page is where there's first change.
I am. Bear with me, please. I need to. Get really close to the screen. Cause I can't see it very well, so I'm going to turn my camera off. Got too many windows open, here we go. Okay. Alright, so. Principal buildings. This is the, one of the things that uh, you know, we did, we have talked about, you know, what could potentially be um. Excuse me, unintended consequences is those little outlier parts that um. Refer to other parts of zoning and um, this says. Uh, currently could only have. You can. You can locate more than one principal building on a lot. So if we are taking what is one lot and essentially allowing what could be up to five. Structures on it. That met the rules, then. What I was thinking was this was actually contradictory. So this is the first change that I'm bringing forward to the. All of you. Is to eliminate number four.
Number two, I think.
Is it two? I'm sorry. Guess I have to get closer. That's number two, you're right. Cause as you can see, um. Right now it says in zoning, you could only have one house or um. A two-family dwelling on any lot unless it's part of a, a plan unit development. Which is a, as as a special kind of zoning application. So wondering your thoughts and on this and. Uh, if you agreed, it's agreed, uh, had some other thoughts, I'm certainly open to discussion for sure, everybody.
I think. The, the question that went through my mind, but I think it's a non-issue. Is this would allow multiple structures. On the same lot. But because of the setback requirements. And all those other things that apply, I wouldn't see it highly likely that, for example, there would be six. Different separate units on. On a property because it would, unless it was a pretty good sized lot, because. They wouldn't all fit and meet the setback requirements. But what does do is make it a little easier for. Perhaps tiny houses to be. Co-located on a lot.
And we could always look at those smaller footprint homes. Um, we offer cluster development. Uh, applications, a plan unit development and um. So there's lots of different ways that we could look at, as David said. Multiple principal buildings on a lot if somebody truly wanted to bring that forward.
Anyone else have thoughts about, about? This, this proposed change? Well, not, maybe we can move, move along to the next. Next piece.
Okay. So this is what we talked about. Uh, this was the um, the. Closer to it. Number four. Is uh, was what we uh. Chapterized from Montpelier. And I threw in a couple other um, things that. Help people, help laypeople understand how you determine uh, buildings on a lot and. Uh, square footage. So this is where we. Thought that what Montpelier was suggesting was not so bad.
Yeah. And that seems to make, that seems to be what we talked about.
Yep.
You did have a question, which is the illustrations below. Are those new or are those old?
Those are old.
And is it still, are they still okay to have in there or is that confusing?
Nope, they're still okay to have in there. They're kind of like a tutorial.
Okay. Just because the, the lot sizes and all would be. You know, would be different. Now.
Yeah, I can uh, I can make changes um, to a couple of them. Need me.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking.
Otherwise it was, yeah, no, um, this is. This just shows you how you, you calculate density.
Yeah. So might it be um? Should there be perhaps some kind of little footnote about? Um. You know, these are examples only. I'm kind of thinking.
I can, I can add something that that uh, helps the reader understand that that's what these are, sure.
Just so that they're not saying, oh, I need thirteen thousand five hundred square feet to have six dwelling units. Cause they don't. Need, they need. They need much less.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Any other, anyone else have anything? To add to uh, or concerns about the language that's here?
No, I think this is pretty much what we discussed before, in line with that, so I'm, I'm good with it.
Anyone else want to weigh in? No, I think. If nobody else has anything, we can. We can move along to the next changes.
Doki. And here's our dimensional table. Where we've. Certainly learned a lot, everybody, and uh. Changed the ten eight to be what is uh, one fifth of an acre. Or eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet. And oh, several months ago, we had talked about, and I have carried this change right here. Uh, no maximum density for UC two. I want to be sure that you folks still. Are in agreement that you don't want any. Density hindrance. For UC two. And if it helps for me to bring up a map to show you where UC two is. In Berry City, I'm happy to do that.
Anyone? Those are the areas that are kind of right out of the downtown district?
It's the uh, they're half of the downtown, so it is uh, Route sixty-two and Maple Avenue back to the bank area. And then a good half of the north end, I think.
Yeah. And again, if they have to meet the setback requirements. Uh, and have a certain number of. Yeah, if they have to meet the setback requirements. Which kind of preserves the. The visual integrity. I'm not sure why it matters how many units. Are in a building.
Right.
Any other people have thoughts?
Can I ask why we were talking just about UC two and not? I can't remember why we were only talking about UC two. Like, why remove that density requirement and not any others?
I do remember we.
I would have to go back in the. Go ahead, David.
Well, I do remember we talked about. Um, eliminating density requirements all the way throughout. And then came up with this alternative to just. Define um. Housing as exempt from, from that anyhow. So I'm not even, you know, so, so one dwelling unit. Remember a dwelling unit now could equal up to six. Housing units in it.
Are you folks seeing my Google Earth map? So this is UC two. Here's our urban core. Here's our downtown. It doesn't encompass the whole downtown and it doesn't even go out to the north end at all. Um. We had, like I said, we had talked about. That. In these areas. And actually, I think there's one other section. Down here. Old Street, Air Street. This is also UC two down here. Okay? So at least that gives you everybody a visual.
So in some ways. Just because of. The way we've dealt with housing, basically. Saying it, it, how, housing portion of things is exempt. From the um, you know. Density requirements. Then I'm not sure. The way this is kind of. Expressed, it's sort of talking about dwelling units. All of them. It's just a dwelling unit now means up to six units.
I apologize, I did not follow that.
Okay, so we. We use the approach that Montpelier use, which is basically to say for housing. The den- density requirements don't apply. Isn't that what we kind of said? It's the lot square footage size that apply?
Yes.
So right, so everywhere it says one dwelling unit. For X number of square feet. Could be up to six dwelling units for that number of square feet in that zoning district. Is that? Is that correct?
That, are you saying then, David, that that other? That up here? Would, oh, my internet's being silly. Um, this would supersede. Density requirement, some cases, maybe not all, but in most?
That's what I'm thinking. Is that it doesn't matter about what the lot size is, as long as they meet the setbacks. So you really don't have a density per dwelling unit, you have a lot size.
That's, yeah, that's my understanding of what we talked about previously.
Is it possible, so I think that gets to my question then, which is. If we change, make the change that Janet has, you know, redlined for us, there could be. There could be more than six if. We, we have a no maximum.
In the UC two district?
In the UC two district, yes.
There could be unlimited amount, so long as it met the various.
Everything else.
Size requirements.
Yeah. Okay.
And so, you know. That's, and that's the case in the, in the downtown district.
Right. And so this is essentially kind of expanding that downtown district in terms of removing the. Residential density.
I think so. That's, that's how I'm reading it. I'm not.
Yeah, helping to remove a barrier, David.
And that's an even greater barrier removal than the Montpelier language above. In this one district.
In this one district?
Yeah, okay.
So you know, if you picture, for example, the Seminary Street project. That is in, that's in the UC one district. Right across from where the UC two starts. That could have, you know, twenty or thirty units if, if they can fit them on that. Property. And that's a lot more than, than what would be allowed. Otherwise.
Correct. Uh, so the Seminary Street project, I don't know, can you folks see my cursor moving around?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the first lot, their letter, their response to the letter of their, their response. Included the Campbell lot as well. And so they're looking at potentially. Who knows, urging these two and creating one housing development in some fashion here, or. I don't know, maybe it's the building here and they'll put parking here. I haven't seen anything yet. Um. But you've got what is potentially two parcels in two different districts that might. Might snafu a, a really great project, that's all.
Yeah, there's also rights of way through there that have to get sorted out, I think.
There's all kinds of stuff.
So there's a lot of, a lot of pre-work still to be done.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
But if, you know, as an example in the UC two, if, if you went right across the street to where the, the um. You know, where Suits and Green was and all. If that got torn down. Currently, there would be more restrictions on how many units could go in than the other side of the street. But this would make it more like the downtown. Does that kind of answer the question?
That, that helps clarify immensely, thank you.
Does anyone else have any? Questions or thoughts about the, the use, the dimensional table? So the thing, yeah, the main thing to remember is what's going to drive things is the lot frontage and the. Lot coverage and the setbacks and that sort of thing. Going to. Drive how many units can fit in the space. If there's no more questions about that, we can move, move along.
Okay. Uh, I didn't, I didn't include the page before it, but this is the parking minimums section. And just wanted to be sure that we got this through. And residential uses one space per dwelling unit. These simple change. Will make a huge impact.
And that's the one that comports with the new Vermont, state of Vermont regulations, right? So it's not like we have a real choice there anyway.
Not road.
Right.
It's a minimum, so it doesn't, it doesn't preclude. Uh, somebody who wants to. Develop property to put more than one parking piece. Per unit, so somebody wants to build a single family house. With a two-car garage, there's nothing that says they can't. It just, they have to have at least space for one car, it doesn't even have to be a garage. I think, I think that's the way.
Right. And then there's all those other things that say you can't park in the. You can't create. you can't create parking in the front yard, you can't put anything between the front of your house and the, the front of the street. So, again, this is the beginning of something that makes it all just a little bit easier.
Yeah, and that's something when we get in more into, deeper into zoning changes, we're probably going to be talking a lot about some of this stuff, the parking requirements. Certainly, if you drive around town, there's all those requirements, but you see plenty of cars parked in yards and, you know, parked in driveways that are in the front of the house and all those things, so. That's going to take some, some thought when we get deeper into it. But this just brings it to comply with the state, the state statute.
Yes. And will certainly benefit, you know, our Seminary Street project. Makes it easier for them to not have to be doing all kinds of fancy math to figure out how many apartment buildings, how many apartments they come up with and how many bedrooms. It just makes it very simple.
Yep. So, any questions about that? If not, I think that the last thing, wasn't it, on the-
Yeah, that was it.
So are people ready to send this along to city council? And if so, uh, I'd be glad to entertain a motion to do that, to, to you know, prove these changes and recommend the city council adopt them as an interim zoning change.
Yeah, I think so, and they'll make that motion.
Okay, so Joe made the motion and Caitlin- So is there any further discussion? Okay, if, if not, uh, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
So we have adopted that recommendation, so that will now be sent to city council. And as I said, Janet, I would hope that, that, um, we can get a little bit of urgency to get it on their agenda and get a whatever hearing notice or, or, uh, public notice they have to do to comply with the the rules as soon as possible.
Yes.
Yeah, if it would be helpful for me or others on the planning commission to attend the meeting, or, or if Nicholas, the, the city manager has questions about it, you know, certainly could help out if it would help you with that process.
I, I think, uh, as many of you, uh, who can be there will be incredibly beneficial. Um, considering it is coming from the planning commission and I am your staff. Um, a good fortified front helps explain things to people who just, I mean, we've been doing this now, this particular thing for a while, uh, and it's not easy for some people, right? So it helps, it helps to have all, all, most or all of you there to, to show that, you know, you're in support of your changes, you really want them to take this seriously and, and, uh, see the benefits and get it done.
Yeah, and of course, in this process with interim zoning, the city council was free to make changes if they, if they so desire.
Yes, that is correct.
So get, gets the ball rolling and, and gives them some solid things to look at.
So a question on that, I know with traditional changes that we suggest, they can sort of suggest changes and it goes back to us to resubmit them for something like this because it's interim, is that different? Would they be able to just make the changes on their own, or is it similar, it comes back to us and then we send something new to them based on their feedback?
Well, that-
No, it is, they get to make the changes. So let's use an example, say they like everything that we put in front of them except they think six is, you know, way too many.
Yep.
They could make a change to a different number and pass it.
Okay.
But under, it's under interim, as David had explained to you guys before.
Of course.
Still good for two years while we still churn away and make more changes and do the right statutory, uh, number of hearings and everything.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, you know, they, they could choose to send it back to us, but I don't think they have any obligation to do that, they can, it, you know, belongs to them once we send it, send it along.
Yeah, it could die, it could pass, it could change, who knows?
So, so I guess we're all set with that.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, uh, the other question is what happened with the, uh, flood regulations? Do we have to have a hearing on that before that can go to the city council?
We could do those as interim as well, or we could do those, the appropriate regular way, shall we say, and that is hold a public hearing at your next meeting, pass it to city council, wait thirty days, they hold the statutory two hearings and it passes. My suggestion is, is to do it the old-fashioned way because we are working on the updated hazard mitigation plan and we need to hold another public meeting. And a lot of times these ordinance changes get done by the planning commission. And I don't know, I'm hoping there's interest in people reading it or being a part of it, but it was suggested to me to see how you folks felt about uh, being the host of a public meeting for the hazard mitigation plan, which kind of ties into the flood regulations. But it doesn't have to.
And when would we see the hazard, hazard mitigation plan that we could have a chance to look at it and schedule that, that meeting or hearing?
Yeah, staff is making final changes now, I'd really like to get that, I really want to have it done in, uh, next month. So regional planning can get it to FEMA and get it signed off on, because that process takes a while.
Well, I don't know, in my mind, it would make sense to combine all those things. And I wouldn't-
You're suggesting doing the changes to the flood hazard regulations with the interim zoning, David?
No.
Okay.
I'm suggesting following the regular process, but, but you know, roll that in with the hazard mitigation plan.
Okay.
Uh, because people are going to be talking about those things and focusing on it, that would be a perfect time to include the statutory hearing.
Okey-dokey.
Does that sound good to everybody else?
Makes sense to me.
Great, thanks, everybody.
So I guess then we'll hope to see that next month, but we probably should also just be reporting to city council when the interim zoning things come along, that that's the process the other piece is going to go through, because some of them will wonder where that is.
Yes, so here's a question, do you want to hold a public hearing for the flood hazard regulations in June? Because I am required to get an ad in the paper fifteen days prior to our public hearing.
Well, that would be June thirteenth.
Yes.
And do you think that, that the material will be ready in time for that? I mean, the whole hazard mitigation, or would this just be the hearing for the, 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 the flood, flood issues we've talked about?
Just the changes that we talked about last month.
Does anyone have a reason we shouldn't schedule the hearing and get that moving, or do you want to wait until the whole flood hazard mitigation plan is done?
Seems like we should go ahead, I mean,
Yes.
it's, it's, we've, we've worked on this, we're ready to present it, let's move forward.
Well, then, why don't we, why don't we schedule that hearing?
Perfect. All right, so next month is a public hearing for the changes to the flood hazard ordinance. And likely a public meeting for the hazard mitigation plan among everything else.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
And the public meeting doesn't have the same notice requirements as, as the public hearing, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we can get the word out on that in a different way.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I I'm not sure where, where the rest of my, my peers are with their review. So we may not be having the public meeting on the hazard mitigation plan that next month, but I'm trying to expedite this process. Um, so we, uh, we can get more funding and we have our plan in place. So certainly I'll keep everybody posted, but at least, at least you've all given me the green light to make sure that next month is a public hearing for our own flood hazard regulation revisions. That's, that's excellent, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that, or can we move on to talking about the municipal plan?
Excuse me.
So, I mean, we can did, so I, I'm hoping everybody got a chance to look at it um, in advance of the meeting. This is the, just the introduction part. And I don't think anybody else on the planning commission was, was on the commission when this was done, except for me, this was done in twenty twenty. And, and, you know, what you'll see in, in the introduction is there was a there was a focus on, um, health and how, how all the things that this city does in zoning and, and planning ultimately relate to the, the health and wellbeing of the people who live in Berry. So that's what the focus of this was. So there's, there's, you know, there's a fair amount of kind of discussion about what that means and, and you'll saw, you saw the health impact pyr- pyramid and, and where the, um, where the kinds of things that the city does through planning and zoning and other regulation, uh, you know, comes into play with those things. So I don't know if anybody has questions or thoughts about that kind of concept. Um, you know, as I said, we should be thinking about, uh, what we'll be doing over the next few years, because the plan is good for eight years and then we have, have to rewrite it, so it's four years out, so we're halfway through that time period. Yeah, Caitlin?
Um, well, I, I guess one of my questions was, for the next plan, would we continue to have that same focus? Or would the idea be that we are looking at in, you know, eight years on from the last plan, is there a new focus? Um, not that I'm, I mean, I think health is a, a wonderful thing to be focused on. Um, but I'm just, I'm just curious if like the practices typically to like each time you review the plan to put a new lens on it based on the, you know, current um, circumstances surrounding the community. I mean, to me, one thing that when I was thinking about, well, what, what are we going to be talking about for the next eight years, the thing that jumped to my mind was resiliency and like um, addressing like, you know, we've been spending all this time talking about flood recovery, how do we like think about resiliency going forwards the next time we're not having quite as much devastation to the community?
Oh, there's no, I mean, there, the health focus that was new in this plan, it hadn't been in, in previous plans. And it's really up to the commission to sort out how they want to present the plan, it just was, this was a way that seemed to make sense at the time, resiliency makes a lot of sense. And resiliency is another, you know, in some ways, another way of talking about the health and safety of, of the people in the community. Uh, what's interesting is since this plan was adopted, remember some things that have happened was COVID. We didn't know about COVID in twenty twenty-one when we wrote this, and there's a health issue. Uh, and, and the flood certainly has created a lot of, uh, health, health issues and concerns among many other things. Um, so it's, it's just kind of interesting to see what's happened since this was done, that, that nobody really could have easily envisioned. So, so the answer is yes, it can be, it can be changed, it could be expanded, it could, you know, have more than one focus or resilience, it could be the focus and health could be a subset of that and, and there would be other things that would be subsets of that. So it's really up, that, you know, that's why it's worth looking at what we have now. And as we get into the further sections, start to think about what's been done and what hasn't been done and, and what needs to be done. So some things that are on the list that should be done may not be priorities anymore, and other things, there may just be things that aren't even weren't even contemplated at that time.
It, yeah, definitely seems like this is a good time to start looking into it, just exactly for those reasons, we can start to get more familiar with it, see what's there and think about what might change. Um, I'm sort of curious about some of the procedural parts of that, like when we get to the point of writing a new plan, is that sort of delegated to, to one particular person to write with sort of feedback from others, is it completely collaborative, is it kind of a combination? I know we could probably do it any way we want, I'm just curious how it was done previously. Um, and what's like a rough timeline for like how long to dedicate to that, like a year or six months?
Uh, well, a few thoughts, we had a consultant help us with this one.
Okay.
Probably be, um, nice to be able to get a grant to do that. Uh, in part because the state has very specific requirements about things that have to be addressed in the plan. So while we could probably do it without a consultant that would help the process.
That makes sense.
And if you see things further along, there's a lot of graphics and, and other things. But it's the, the planning commission that sets the tone and tells the, you know, the consultant what they want to see with, with their input. And I've always, you know, kind of lesson I learned early in my career is, is that a good consultant is somebody who listens to their client and tells them what
Right.
repeats it back to them essentially, in a, in a more organized way. So that, anyhow, that, the, I don't know if people have any specific thoughts, but again, the focus was on health at that time, that was a pretty new concept. Now, you know, there was, I didn't get to the workshop, I, maybe Janet did. There was recently a, you know, a workshop on health, and health resiliency and, and city plans, so it's, still gets attention. Did, did you go to that, um, that workshop that the regional commission put on, Janet?
No, I did not.
No, anyhow, just, it's, you know, it's out there. But even if we were presenting it, uh, and health was a focus, it might not be done quite this way.
So David, are you saying that the consultant wrote this plan, like with input from the, um, planning commission, but that they, they largely had responsibility for the writing piece?
Right, right, so the, you know, the idea of health came from the planning commission, but the, the consultant sort of crafted the first draft and then and we did a lot of discussing and wordsmithing and, and all to get it to what we wanted it to be. I think if you look at the kind of purpose and vision and where we're headed, you know, a lot of those things still certainly uh, ring true, but some of them might be not politically correct anymore, or not, not maybe the best way to express things. But they're all, you know, they're all legitimate. And, you know, things like the, the schools have to be addressed in, in the city plan, but that really comes from the school district uh, more than from the planning commission. Another thing in the process is we got a lot of, we tried to get input from department heads, so from the police department, from the fire department and all. We really didn't have that much buy-in from some of those folks, would be my recollection. Is, you know, was like pulling teeth to get them to look at those sections and give us information and data and give us thoughts and opinions of, you know, what, what they thought maybe should be content there. Is that your recollection, Janet? Because you were the one who was hounding them all the time.
Yes. That's a nice way of putting it. Sometimes it's really hard to get other departments to focus and understand the the validity of this plan.
And, you know, as we go through it, there's a lot of things that ultimately. They're the ones who are supposed to be taking the lead on these things. So, you know, planning commission works on this prepares it, but it's the city council. That adopts it and as you go through the plan, you'll see that there are goals and things and 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 different groups are assigned. Lead that process. And probably if there's something we haven't done that we could be doing, it would be to looking at those and and. Contacting those that were the leads and say, so what's going on with this and in the plan? What have you done? What can we do to? To encourage it to get done.
And section two of the plan, when we get around to sharing that um. That's where it uh breaks down some of the tasks that were listed in the in the plan. And uh, two years ago, three years ago, uh, the planning commission actually invited several different. Departments to come speak to them about some of the tasks that were outlined that could be done. Uh, mind you, it's a plan, so plans change all the time, but um. We we really did have, we really did struggle to get some of the tasks. Addressed. Like the recreation plan, the bike path plan, um, that really fell to what what was our recreation department, so. Uh, those will be things that we're we're gonna have to be talking about. And we probably are going to be visited again by regional planning in another year and a half. To do their second check in. Uh, which at that point, I definitely want to have a grant application in place that gives us plenty of time. At like a year and a half uh to get a new plan done, so we're not. We're not up against, you know, a timeline of, oh, my goodness, we're about ready to expire, so. We've got to readop some version of the existing of um like Caitlin has pointed out, the city. Has been through so much. Since twenty twenty alone, since this plan got adopted. Everything changed, so.
Yeah, so I'm sure some of the goals and objectives will be the same, but there'll be some new things that come to the front forefront. And and will need to be addressed and and in very different ways than maybe they were before. And the other challenge and and I would hope, you know, I think some of this, at least for the internal things, you know, if the if. If the city council offers strong support for the process and the city manager offers strong support. And makes it known to department heads that this is just part of their job and responsibility is to, you know. Have input in this and take part and, you know, take some ownership, then I think there's a better. Chance that some of those things can happen and when they come back later, they're, you know, again, maybe they're more willing to because. They have some skin in the game to begin with. So does anybody have any questions about this or any thoughts about things that are um? Uh, good, bad, or or, you know, in what what's here that you like, Rosemary?
Hi, um, I mean, this is really impressive. I I read this. I think last year when I was appointed, but I hadn't looked at it for a while and it it really is quite impressive. I really like the idea and it seemed very appropriate that resiliency. And recovery. Should be the focus, but there's no reason, like you've said, and I agree with. That the the health aspect of this and the well being of our community, I mean, it kind of all goes hand in hand. So I'm okay with sticking with that as part of the focus for sure, everybody else is.
Of course, we have to remember that when we kind of get deep into this process. In a couple of years, we don't know what's going to happen over the next couple of years. Yeah, I mean, resiliency and health are always part of the equation, but how that gets addressed, you know, or or. Things like housing, if there's all of a sudden two or three years from now. Several hundred new housing units that would. Mean we would be speaking differently to housing than if there aren't. So that's just, you know, so kind of I see where we are, but it's got to start somewhere. Rosemary.
Will you remind me, um, it, do we have a few years to do? When is this due again?
It's it's good for.
Coming to be updated.
It's well, it's, I think now it's eight years, isn't it, Janet? So we adopted this in twenty twenty, so by twenty twenty eight, we have to have.
Okay.
Plan completed, but it's process.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm just wondering if it's too soon because for the reason you just said.
That has to be approved by the regional planning commission. Uh, the last time. And I would think anytime we're doing this, you try, we try awfully hard to get public input. Yes, Joe.
Yeah, one minor thing I do know is it talks about like kind of the greater region, not that those other communities are the focus, but I mean, they definitely have an impact. Which makes sense. Um, but I noticed it mentions Berlin and Berry Town, but not Montpelier, and it seems like Montpelier would be worth including in that sort of thing because. Those four communities collectively are all very different and unique, but they are kind of a core of of the area. So it just seems like they would be appropriate to include too, but.
Yeah, we could. I think I think there's a statutory requirement that at least the adjacent communities get.
Yep.
Get addressed and that's that's Berry Town and Berlin are the two that that immediately border us, but that doesn't mean we can't. Take it beyond that if we.
Yeah, just something to consider.
So that was a part of it that the consultant probably did more of the work on.
Yeah, that makes sense. And yeah, and it doesn't address them in a lot of detail, but just sort of. Just talks about our collective interests and and whatnot, so.
It was to check off the box.
Right.
Requirements, uh, you know, there's, there's things in the plan that you'll look at and say, well, I'm not sure it's that biggest. Thing in Berry, but we have to deal with it and there's other things that we probably could get into even more depth with. Anyone else have any thoughts or questions? Well, one thing that that I think, you know, can start thinking about, and I think it's. I think the flood has kind of caused some of this is some of the. Uh, ideas of defining a vision for the future and what are our shared community. Values and you can kind of go through that list of balanced competing interests and demand, address current and long term needs. You know, promote appropriate revitalization, grow, all those things are are even more forefront right now. After the flood. It's actually a pretty good list. You know, in a broad sense about some of the things that need to. The community needs to work on.
Well, I would, I just wanted to to say that I appreciated um. Like the opportunity for us to sort of be going through this in this fashion. It feels very good to it like it's a bite sized chunk. I did not feel overwhelmed. And having to like try and read the whole plan all at once. And I think that will be really helpful for us going forward to sort of continue this. Um, in future meetings and get our, you know, just get familiar with it. Um, so that when it comes time to really dig into. Um, how we want to structure the the next plan. Will all feel like. We're. We're comfortable with, you know, where we were the starting point, the last.
Oh, good. So I guess the next meeting we'll we'll find another, the next chunk to look at. But, you know, as it gets farther into this, it's going to be more nuts and bolts and less big picture. So so, you know, we'll be talking about much more specific things and then. You know, the last part of the plan, which we won't get to is all the different neighborhoods and what. What they consist of and that will also be really interesting to look at in light of what's happened. In the last few years to see if we even picked out the right boundaries for those kinds of things. Yes, Janet.
Uh, yeah, as I was uh picking down the plan for everybody, I have since posted it on the website. Section by section as well, so section two is actually sixty three pages. With eight major topics, so we're gonna have to really wonder. Um, you got nine pages of introduction. I don't think you want to read sixty three pages. Uh, for the next, the next meeting, right? So we can, I can certainly break that down further, but um, what I want to say was, uh, when I was uh. Adding bookmarks and and shortcuts to to these sections. The future land use map, which is what the planning commission envisioned Berry City was going to look like. By the time this plan expired or hope, or at least envision, it's already radically different. So uh, that'll be one of the, that's a, that's a statutory requirement is to have a future land use map. And so we will have a very different starting point when we start this process. And then to look again beyond for the next eight years, uh, is certainly gonna uh give some pause for everybody.
Well, you know, a good example is what we just did today was basically undid. What some of the old, the last zoning iteration did, which arose out of this plan. So there's, there is an example of of how how things have changed. And and I know needs and focus have changed. So if we had done that in two thousand twenty, we probably would have been run out of town. And now now it's now the need for more housing and more density is is, you know, at the forefront. So that's, you know, an example of a big change. So I think for the next ones that we probably should break that down into, you know, maybe two, one or two sections. You know, of part two at a time. Because they're each dealing with more, you know, specific kind of issues or whatever. So may maybe you could look at them or even I could chat about that, but uh, break it down in, you know. The bite sized chunks.
Sure, and and I'm looking at what I've done so far, so the first section of section two is economic development. Second section is housing. If you do those two sections alone. That's twenty one pages. So that's something to think about. If that's too much, uh, we can do section by section. Some are longer than others. Energy is longer, public utilities is shorter. You, you guys collectively decide what chunks you want or wait for David and I to chat. It it's whatever you'd like.
Well, just for for what it's worth, it depends a little bit on how much we want to dig into some of these. Um, but for example, economic development could be a meeting unto itself. Housing could probably be more than one meeting unto itself if we want to really look under the hood and start. Not writing the next plan, but thinking about what's changed. And then maybe starting to. Get some notes and all that would help us when we're ready to actually tackle the the next go through. Does that make sense? You know, if we wanted to do a ten thousand foot view, then we could do a bunch of them at once, but if we actually want to. Go a little bit more than just what the words are on the page, then you might want to. Particularly for the things like housing and economic development, just keep those separate and. See where it takes us.
I would agree with that. I feel like those are are really big topics and kind of very different conversations. Um, it doesn't feel like lumping those together necessarily. And in trying to have the a conversation about both at the same time, but. I mean, not twenty pages seems like an amount that I would be willing to read before a meeting, but. The topics themselves don't seem to lend them to that.
Yeah, there's, there's less fluff language than in the introduction. You know, one thing I don't, I don't remember now, but I don't know how we chose what order to put the things in that. But the order of things might flip where housing is now the first thing. Discussed and and economic development is a second. I don't know. But, you know, you think about even how that stuff gets put out there.
Yeah, the topics are set by uh statute. Um, but I I don't remember there being a specific order, David. That's a great point.
What I'm wondering is if there, if the order was because that's how they came in the statute or because. That's how we ended up organizing them.
Yeah.
And if 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 we ended up organizing them and putting the the big issues in the front, then the order might change. So are, do we have anything further we want to do on this? This review other than um. We'll get on to the next one and and I hope we can think about having maybe a bit more. Bit more depth of what's in these things and where we think. Things are working or not working or things that need to be addressed in some way. Does that make sense? Okay, so. I think that means we're ready to move on with the agenda. And um, the next thing is just to confirm our next meeting date will be June thirteenth. And that's the second Thursday and we will be having a public hearing at that meeting. On the flood zone things and also we'll we'll. Put some time aside to continue going through this, the plan. Is there any other things anybody can think of that should be, we might want to have on that agenda? Yes, Janet.
Uh, be prepared to have the consultant from VHB. Uh, start to talk to us about the North Main to Summer Street plan. Uh, I I owed Michael a phone call, but uh clearly I've been home. Um, so I'm really hoping to get that rocking and rolling, so. We keep passing each other, um, but I really want to uh step that up. I think they have a lot of front end work already done, actually, so. And it ties in perfectly with the Seminary Street plan. We've got several. We still have unfortunately several empty storefronts. We've got some businesses who have been doing facade renovations. And so, you know, the North Main to Summer, that's a section over behind North Main Street, but it certainly ties into. You know, the revitalization of our downtown for sure, so. So I'm hoping that Michael will have something ready for us for June.
Awesome.
So the next item is staff updates and Janet. Uh, sent us her updates, which was a list of pretty busy stuff. And I know the prospect height stuff kind of came really fast and and hard when it had to get. Had to get finished up. The timeline for that was short. So now we wait and see what we hear.
Yes, uh, and they are actually reviewing our application as we speak. Uh, there's been some emails this evening of which I'm sure David's going to see. Uh, they're asking some in-depth questions about why we want this development to occur. Uh, and where does the city stand with uh low to moderate income housing? And so um, I think it's a good sign that they're really looking at our application. And I really, really hope that we're a candidate and we get funded, so uh, exciting stuff for sure.
And that's interesting because the, there was also a funding request put into Senator Sanders' office. For the congressionally allocated uh funds that used to be called earmarks. Um, asking, they've, they've been asking the same questions. With a a similar very short timeline to respond. So that's something, you know, when I talked to MA about that, I said the city really has to weigh in on. On how that's going to work because the cities would be the one that. Would, you know, has the option on a property to would would be owning owning it, deciding how that stuff happens. So. Stay tuned. I'm sure we'll be talking.
I just had a couple of other things to share with everybody. Um, we actually. I just had a couple other things to share with everybody. Um we actually were uh. There was a grant given to the Chindon County Regional Planning Commission to complete a um. And the acronym escapes me right now. Uh it's like a transit development plan and we're one of their. Uh sites. So Nicholas and I are meeting with, we met last week via Zoom with folks from C C R P C. And our own regional planning commission and their um. Their transit development uh consultants, I think they were in Virginia. Um we had a unfortunately too broad of a of an area. We we uh we were asked to provide an area to study and we said. The parking lots and this and that and in the downtown and what they want, I think is more of a specific site. And so um lots more to come on that. Uh we're definitely in the infant stages on that one. Who knows what could come of that? Uh it could be a transit center like Montpelier has, it could be. You know, some other suggestions as what to do with parking, our parking lots, they were uh. Flabbergasted at how much previous pavement we have in the downtown for parking lots. They'd never seen such a thing before. Uh so I think the consultants were pretty excited to uh start digging into our site. Um but more to come on that one. And uh turning point, I think I've spoken to you folks about turning point before. I can't remember right now if I put it in my staff report. They are on the verge of buying. The building, which is next to ladder one grill. They received a grant through the city for five hundred thousand dollars. Uh one of their many funding sources to get the project done. Uh so the ball is picked up on that, um but their first major hurdle is to get that property bought. And um I think they're very close to doing that, so. Uh you're gonna see some development, I think the end of the summer, early this fall, start to happen at that site, so. Yep, uh if any of you have been out and about, I don't know if some of you folks walk much of the city or you have set paths. Uh Ward Five School is under construction as we speak. Downstreet Housing is, they have. Dove in heavily on that one. They want to get uh Ward Five School done. Not done, but it's significantly advanced before they start doing the work on the Bromer Street Apartments. And if some of you don't know where that is, you go up Beckley Street and at the top of Beckley. On the right, as you're exiting out of the city, you'll see a um. It's like two, they look like two row houses. They're old apartment buildings. Downstreet Housing is doing some major renovations to that site. Uh and uh taking one unit and making it fully accessible. Uh so that's the other part of the Granite City Apartments grant. So lots going on there as well.
Is that the place that we, when we did a site visit, when we were looking at lot sizes and all? Is that where we went up? Was that up back? No, that was, I think that was up Beckley Street, maybe not.
We did not go as far up as Homer. We were at the Hunter Avenue.
Yeah, okay.
Um condominium units.
Yeah.
We didn't make it all the way up the top. Uh but if you're out walking, driving around, you know, go up around Humbert and and Belvedere and. It's, I just, I think it's exciting. Lots going on, lots going on.
So just another thing for what it's worth is there is a breakfast diner in the works downtown. So we've.
She has all of her permits.
People have been saying for a while after Supes and Greens closed, we need a place for breakfast. And there might be one.
Um you you will have one. It's uh it's gonna be breakfast and lunch.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tasty Bites. I don't know if you know Lisa, she has a food truck. Tasty Bites and she decided to open the diner. She's just renovating that space right now. And they're waiting for the ADA compliant uh facade. That the um owner is going to be working on, so she's hoping to be open. Well, she wanted May fifteenth, but now she's talking June first, so she's working on it. She's a great book too.
Well, you start to see a lot of changes in the front of that building.
Yeah.
And once that happens, um you know, it was a restaurant, so there's kitchen and and.
Exactly.
Needs flooring and and you know, the, it's gonna be like a diner, I think, with a counter and.
Yeah, exactly.
And there's other properties, uh other downtown things in the works too. But that one is uh coming along pretty, pretty far.
Yeah, we had talked with them. I'm on the, I'm on the team that's organizing the the pride celebration in June and we had actually talked to them about vending, but they weren't gonna be ready quite in time, so maybe next year.
So anyhow, there there are some things going on downtown with building renovations and and up and and so on, so. I think that's positive. So does anybody else, any have any questions for Janet or any comments for roundtable or anything at this point? Any roundtable comments anybody wants to make, things going on? You're doing your uh spring raking and stuff. You can go to the Towne Berry uh leaf drop place and now it's. Available to city residents whenever it's open. Anything else? If there's nothing else, uh we could have a motion to adjourn if somebody wants to make that.
They're moved.
Caitlin moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rosemary seconded, uh so all in favor of adjourning, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
So I think we're, we're all set. We're adjourned. Thanks. I hope this was a. Good meeting for you and I'm looking forward to getting uh getting in front of the city council with our interim zoning changes. I think that will be a. Great, great thing to do.
Very good.
Thank you, Janet. Thanks for hanging in with us.
Yeah. Have a good night.
Take care, everybody.
Everyone have a good Memorial Weekend.
You too.
Yes, you too.
Thanks.